Let's call Monday, April 25th, 2022, Blue Springs Planning Commission meeting in order. If everybody could please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the liberty of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you and welcome, everybody, this evening, those watching at home. If I could please have a roll call.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Present.
Commissioner Peel?
Present.
Commissioner Veal?
Present.
Commissioner Rohr?
Present.
Commissioner Billups?
Present.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Present.
Commissioner Graham?
Present.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
Present.
Chairperson Sanderson?
Present.
Alright, tonight's agenda consists of item 1A, the meeting minutes from April 11th Planning Commission meeting. Item 2, site plan design review with alternative design standards for five-star motors. Item 3, rezoning for Guyer Fence. Item 4, rezoning for Frisbee Monuments, Blue Springs. Item 5 and 6, plan development final and site plan design review. And final plat for Redwood, Blue Springs. Item 7, other business, and item 8 is adjournment. At this time, I entertain a motion for the consent agenda for the approval of the Monday, or I'm sorry, April 11th, 2022 meeting.
So moved.
Have a motion from Commissioner Honeycutt, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a second from Commissioner Cradoff, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, so motion carries. And Mr. Mouton, you had a quick announcement.
Yeah, before we begin this evening, I just wanted to acknowledge that in your Planning Commission packet tonight, there are a couple of errors from the staff side of things. They don't materially change any of the actions that the Planning Commission could take on those applications tonight, but I just wanted to acknowledge those and apologize for those up front. As you know, Matt Wright just left our assistant director, and we are adjusting to that new normal. And so, we pledged to be better, and, but the last two weeks were a little rough on us. So, we will point them out as we go this evening, but just wanted to let you all know that we are aware of them. And that, in reviewing those, I don't believe they will have a material impact on any of the applications in terms of decisions being made by Planning Commission this evening on those. But wanted to point those out before we begin, so, thank you.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Mouton. I'll now open the public hearing for agenda item 2, SPDR 0322-8206 for five-star motors, and ask for exhibits from our city attorney, Jackie Summer.
I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit 1, staff report with attachments. 2, applicant plans with attachments. 3, affidavit of publication in the examiner on April 9, 2022. 4, 185-foot notification map. 5, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. 6, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. 7, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And 8, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference.
Alright, thank you. And at this time, I'd ask for the staff's presentation, Mr. McGee.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Commissioners. Before you this evening is a request for a site plan design review with alternative development standards for five-star motors to allow a reduction of 25-feet setback for a light pole located in the southwest corner and existing light pole bases in the southern property located at 1811 West 40 Highway. This site is currently developed, and the new buildings or, no new buildings or additions are being proposed at this time. The zoning is regional commercial, and the property is approximately 0.97 acres. As previous mentioned, the site will be used for auto sales and service, and there is an active conditional use permit that was approved in 2008. There were minor errors in the staff report, and I would like to correct those now. Under the land use portion, the existing land use is outdoor sales and services, not retail building construction contract with storage. Also, on the building topology section, the building is general commercial building, which is allowed by right for regional commercial district. Staff reviewed the site plan design review, and except for the requested deviations, the application complies with the UDC. The deviations being requested include waiving a 25-feet setback of the light poles and waiving the maximum light spill over allowed at the property line. The existing pole bases sit at zero-foot setback on the southern property line. Due to the proximity of the light poles for the right-of-way, the light spill over will exceed what is allowed by code. With the regional commercial zoning district, outdoor lighting will, with a 90-degree cutoff, is allowed 1.0-foot cantilever spill over at the property line. The largest possibility for a spill over appears to be on the western access drive, where a foot cantilever reading shows 6.2 just before the property line. Staff believes the requests are reasonable, since the pole bases are existing, and utilizing those bases will benefit the users of this site. Staff also believes that since there is no residential reality closed, the light spill over will not create any nuisance for the adjacent properties. Based on the review criteria for both alternative development standards and the site plan design review, staff recommends approval of the site plan design review with alternative development standards with two conditions. I'll be happy to answer any questions you all may have.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for staff by the Commissioners? Yes, Mr. Cradoff.
Are you speaking about the lights that are currently there, or are they going to add another one, or are they just the lights that are currently there?
They're going to add one on the southwest property line, and there's two pole bases on the southern property line.
Is that north of that west entrance, or is that south of that west entrance?
So, yeah, oh, in this area here, that's where they are proposing a new light pole.
Did that answer your question, Mr. Cradoff, or Commissioner Cradoff?
Yeah, the light pole is going to be here where the hand is on the screen, on the south side of the access drive on the southwest 19th Street, that's going to be the new pole. And then, the two existing poles are on the two sides of the access drive that is on 40 Highway.
I was trying to determine whether that light pole was towards the rear or more towards the front. It looks like it's more towards the front on the southwest section.
All of the poles are up against the adjacent roadways.
Okay, alright, thank you.
Any other questions for staff by the Commissioners? Okay, thank you. Would the applicant like to come forward and make any statements or answer any questions? So just please come forward, and you just need to be sworn in, and then state your name and address, please, for the record.
We can sit right there, just raise your hand. But first tell me your name, so we can turn around and you can tell me your name.
Okay, it's Rustalyn York.
How do you spell that?
R-U-S-T-A-L-Y-N.
You know what's the?
York, Y-O-R-K. Yes, I do. Any questions?
Yeah, if you could, leave your address as well. Please state your address, please.
My company's address is 23910 South Lucille Lane, peculiar.
Yeah, any questions for this applicant by the Commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Cradoff.
Several other businesses along that corridor on 40 Highway have had vandalism issues, and I agree strongly with your concerns with lighting and security. However, I'm just curious, you seem to be concerned with the lighting in the front of your business at the property line, but what about the rear and the side of your building? I notice you have cars parked on the east and west side of the building, and you can access your property very easily from the property behind you to the north, where there's hardly any buffer. Could you elaborate on that, please?
I'm the contractor in this situation, I will let, Jeremy probably needs to be sworn in.
Yeah, yeah, if you could please state your name, please.
My name's Jeremy Gregory, and I live at 9207 Homes in Kansas City, Missouri.
Okay, I'll swear to you, I have to swear to you. Do you swear, tell me if you're looking to another nature?
Yes. So currently, um...
If you could come forward just a little bit, sorry.
Currently, the tenant is responsible for any other lighting other than these three poles that we are installing. He does believe that this will take care of most of his issues at this point, so that's what we're working on. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant by the Commissioners? Alright, see none, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this project? Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition to this project? Any other further discussion by the Commissioners? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'd ask for a motion to the site plan design review with the alternative design standards.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Veal.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the site plan development review with alternate development standards with the two conditions, SPDR 0322-8206 for five-star motors.
Alright, I have a motion from Commissioner Veal, do I have a second?
Second.
Stokenberry, a second from Commissioner Stokenberry, and this will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Peel?
Nay.
Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Commissioner Rohr?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Chairperson Sanderson?
Aye.
So motion carried, and with the two conditions. Alright, I'll now open the public hearing for agenda item 3, RZ 0322-8202 for Guyer Fence, and ask for exhibits from our city attorney, Jackie Summer.
I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit 1, staff report with attachments. 2, applicant plans with attachments. 3, affidavit of publication in the examiner on April 9, 2022. 4, 185-foot notification map. 5, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. 6, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. 7, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And 8, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference.
Alright, thank you, and as for staff's presentation, Ms. Kelly.
Alright, thank you. Before you this evening is a request for a rezoning for Guyer Fence located at 2501 Northwest Jefferson Street from GB General Business to RC Regional Commercial to allow the building or construction contractor land use. The property includes 4.82 acres and is generally located along Northwest Jefferson, a minor collector which runs parallel to Interstate 70. Properties along this corridor are primarily zoned RC Regional Commercial or LI Light Industrial, a more intensive zoning designation. The property was developed in the late 1980s and has been used by Guyer Fence as their main office and contractor storage area since this time. The requested rezoning is supported by a change in the land uses that were allowed within the GB General Business zoning district since the development was originally approved in 1986 under an older version of the UDC. Most of the land uses that have existed on the site since development in the late 1980s were permitted in the GB General Business zoning district until the code was amended in the year 2000. After this amendment, building and construction contractor was only allowed in the RC Regional Commercial zoning districts, as well as the more intensive zoning districts. The property owner requests the rezoning to RC to bring the existing use into compliance with the current UDC zoning requirements. No physical changes are being proposed on the property at this time. As the property is currently developed, and there are no additional site improvements proposed for the site at this time, staff requests that a general development plan be waived for this rezoning request. Staff reviewed the application and finds that all review criteria has been met and allows the existing land use to be brought into compliance with current zoning requirements. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning, and I will stand for any questions.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for staff by the Commissioners? See none, thank you. And it looks like the applicant would like to make a presentation or answer some questions. If you just need to be sworn in, state your name and address, please.
Tell me your name.
Kelly Guyer.
Can you read it?
2224 Northwest Timberline, Blue Springs.
Okay, can you read your name? Do you swear to tell the truth about what you're looking to do?
Yes, I do. I'm just here to answer any questions you might have.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for the applicant by the Commissioners? See none, thank you. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in favor of this project? Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to speak in opposition to this project? Any further discussion by the Commissioners?
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Veal.
I'd like to address staff. I know that there was a city council denial for a request to go to RC rezoning in 2020. What has really changed on the property to make it more compliant?
I believe the case you're referring to was the same property, but a different applicant, and the, jump in if you do, I'm... I'm not familiar with all the detail on that case, but I know that it was, I believe it was more the, the car, the use that it was, the, it was not the same applicant, and it was a different use. I think it was for car sales, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, it was a different use.
Yeah, that project was a similar rezoning request to rezon the property from General Business to Regional Commercial, and also at that time was a request for a conditional use permit to allow for auto sales as part of that. The auto sales portion, that request for the conditional use permit was denied, and then subsequently the rezoning request was denied or withdrawn at that time. So, it was not as much the rezoning request that was denied as it was the request for the conditional use permit for the use of the property, of the east half of the property, for an auto sales, vehicle sale service use.
Okay, understood. Also, another question, is there another business that's operating on that property?
There has been a request from another business for a construction contractor to, a business license has been requested for them to move in there. That has not been approved yet, because the zoning is not, does not allow for that use in the general business zone. So, that is what prompted the property owner, Guyer Fence, Kelly Guyer, to request an overall rezoning of the entire property to not only bring his business and his contracting business into compliance with the current code, which the construction contractor needs to be in the general business zone in order to be conforming to the UDC, but also to allow a similar business on the east half of the property.
Okay, I noticed there's DirecTV that's operating in that particular property.
Yes, they may be in the building, they do not have an active business license yet, because staff has not been able to sign off on that, because the zoning does not allow it, unless this is approved this evening.
Okay, but they have been running their business from that property?
They are not supposed to be at this time, since they do not have a license.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Thank you, Sean. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions or discussion, I guess, by the Commissioners? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing, and ask for a motion on the rezoning.
Mr. Chair?
Commissioner Veal.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the rezoning, RZ 0322-8202 for Guyer Fence.
Alright, have a motion from Commissioner Veal, do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Honeycutt, and this will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Veal?
Aye.
Commissioner Rohr?
Aye.
Commissioner Billups?
Aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry?
Aye.
Commissioner Graham?
Aye.
Commissioner Honeycutt?
Aye.
Commissioner Cradoff?
Aye.
Commissioner Peel?
Nay.
Chairperson Sanderson?
Aye.
So motion carried, the site will be recommended and heard by the city council on Monday, May 2nd, meeting at 6:00 PM. I'll now open the public hearing for agenda item 3, RZ 0322-8203 for Frisbee Monuments, Blue Springs, and ask for exhibits from our city attorney, Jackie Summer.
I offer the following exhibits into the record. Exhibit 1, staff report with attachments. 2, applicant plans with attachments. 3, affidavit of publication in the examiner on April 9, 2022. 4, 185-foot notification map. 5, names and addresses of property owners within 185 feet of the site. 6, copy of the letter sent to said property owners. 7, Title IV Land Use Section, Blue Springs Code of Ordinances by reference. And 8, 2014 Comprehensive Plan by reference.
And as for staff's presentation, Mr. McGee.
Thank you, Chair, thank you, Commissioners. The next item on our agenda is a rezoning request for Frisbee Monument, Blue Springs, located at 2501 Southwest 40 Highway, and generally located at the northeast corner of Southwest 40 Highway and Cemetery Road. The applicant and owner is requesting to rezon a property from GB PUD, General Business Plan Unit Development, to LI PUD, Light Industrial Plan Unit Development. The PUD was approved in 1986 to allow the shared access and parking to serve the development. There were no additional land use restrictions adopted with the PUD. Staff reviewed the request under the nine review criterias for rezoning. Staff believes that the request is in accordance with the comprehensive plan, particularly the corridor reinvestment designation of 40 Highway corridor. Rezoning the subject property to LI will allow a wider mix of small businesses and land uses that often seek small industrial-type businesses. The rezoning meets goals 1 and 2 of the investment category of the comprehensive plan. This rezoning will encourage the growth and diversity of business sectors in support of entrepreneurs and small business development. Staff believes that the rezon is appropriate of giving the current mix of land uses and potentially uses that may be permitted with the rezoning of the property. Staff recommends approval of the rezoning request. I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Alright, thank you. Any questions for staff by the Commissioners?
Chair?
Yes, Mr. Peel.
Jamarcus, is there any other businesses that are operating on that property right now?
From my understanding, it's just one, but I can have the applicant speak more on that.
Okay, I thought there might have been a mattress company and some, two other businesses, so, so, I'll ask the applicant.
Okay.
Thank you, Jamarcus.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions for staff by the Commissioners?
Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Cradoff.
I have a question for staff. I have a question about the impact of adjacent property values concerning this particular property with regards to the neighborhood centers located to the north of this property and the west kept cemetery just to the west. A buffer of some sort would be probably, would probably help screen the products that are placed haphazardly on the south and west side of the property grounds here. Also, there's a large trailer parked on the north side of the building with a flat tire and wooden pallets alongside of it strewn on the ground. There's a damaged trash enclosure also, all of which faces the businesses to the north, and is not aesthetically pleasing, and could be stressful to the surrounding businesses, I'm sure. It appears this business may have issues with accommodations for space, and my guess, tell me if this makes sense. Could you revisit the project? Could we revisit this project another time until we could, or certainly are in compliance with codes, if that's the issue?
I believe the owner could speak to some of the existing conditions on the property, and, but those would be property maintenance code violations, and that could be addressed, and I'm sure that the property owner could speak to those this evening. In terms of the buffering requirements, staff felt that this was an existing site, that the uses on the property had been there prior to the zoning. Well, the zoning changed, but the uses have been there, and so this request is just bringing the zoning up to date to what the use has been on the property for a number of years. We've seen this happen probably five times now, if not six, along the 40 Highway corridor, where we have had businesses operating for many, many years on properties in which the zoning didn't technically allow it, and that the zoning has not kept up with the way that the businesses have been changing tenants in and out, and there was no way for staff to really identify those, because we didn't have a process in place when a new tenant moves into an existing building. So, over the years, we've ended up with situations like this, where we have a more industrial-type building or user in a space that's owned for regional commercial, and so those other requests have been made to rezone those properties to fit the underlying land use. Staff does not believe that there will be a negative impact on adjacent properties, since many of the adjacent properties are of a similar intensity land use in that industrial-type nature. Any types of buffering, because it is an existing site to the north in terms of landscaping or anything out of those types of things, just isn't really feasible, and staff didn't believe that there would be a negative impact across the property, across the west side of Cemetery Road, to the cemetery's property and the future development of that cemetery. I don't think there'll be any negative impact to the property values on the cemetery from this property being rezoned to industrial to allow the use of the building and the property as it has been for a number of years. But in terms of the existing conditions, the flat tire on the trailer, and maybe some of the other provisions that you pointed out, Commissioner Cradoff, I'd like to have the property owner speak to that before, you know, I would recommend that before the Planning Commission recommend or asks to continue the case, but I think he may be able to provide some information as to the existing conditions on the property.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff by the Commissioners? Alright, I guess the applicant would like to make a presentation or speak. If you could please have your name and address recorded.
My name's Kevin Frisby, my address is 32804 Murphy School Road, Grand Valley, Missouri.
Okay, can you raise your hand, do you promise to the two of you, and then?
I do. Thank you. I'm Kevin Frisby, I'm the founder of Frisbee Monuments and Frisbee Filter, 42 years ago. We opened, we bought the property back in, we bought the property 12 years ago when we started Frisbee Monuments there in Blue Springs. We have a long-term commitment to building our business in Blue Springs. We're family-owned, we have been, and we're going to continue to be. And when we bought the property, we, we're, we, the monuments that we mostly sell, we're out, we're out front. As far as I know, we've kept our place from the front side fairly neat, and it looks, we keep everything pretty tidy from the front side. When we bought the property, it was, it was an old car wash, abandoned car wash that was pretty rundown. The, we're, one thing you asked about was about the mattress and some other businesses in there. There is, behind us, there is a, last month, there was, there's a lot of businesses back there, carpet stores, the different places you said. They rezoned that last month, and you guys approved that, the real building's behind us. Some of the pallets and some of the stuff that you talked about were also, were not necessarily ours. We share a lot of common area through there, there is a semisments and stuff that we share, so not all of that. Those are ours, although, everything is fairly picked up, it's not like there's trash, there is some pallets and stuff stacked that does belong to us, but also does belong to other businesses. The mattress factory has moved out, they moved up the road here, here, here last month. So remember, there's properties that is Jason, that are Jason ours. That when that whole complex was built, it was one complex, and then it got split off in 1986 and got sold. The front, we own the front two buildings, you can see it right here, he has an overhead view. We own the front, the front one acre and the two buildings. We currently occupy Frisbee Monument out of one half and Frisbee Filter out of the other. We're wanting to expand our monument business to run some of our production there to make small porcelain images. And our filter business, we're wanting to put our research and development lab there, and that requires more of industrial-type zoning. And also, we would like to be able to rent the outer building out to some other types of businesses. And again, the business property behind us has went industrial. Also, you guys had approved that last month, and so did city council, so we're just kind of looking to expand our business, and we're committed, we've been there 12 years now, and you know, we're very committed to Blue Springs for years to come. So, any questions?
Any questions?
Did I answer your question about the other businesses that, they're not us? We only have two businesses currently right there.
Any other questions by the Commissioners for the applicant?
Chair?
Yes, Mr. Peel.
Mr. Frisby, the, you mentioned the filter, the Frisbee filter? Um, Mr. Frisby, the, the, you mentioned the filter, the Frisby filter? And I think on your application it says R and D. What kind of R and D goes on in a filter store?
What it is, is that, uh, there's, there's a testing, like, let's just say, uh, for a HEPA filter that would, uh, clean a, uh, clean air room for a hospital. Uh, you have to test the filter media, uh, to, uh, to make sure that it's going to, uh, you know, filter out the proper amount of air. Um, so, um, there's just, um, there's machines, uh, let's say, take a parachute. Um, in World War Two, when they started, uh, using parachutes, the parachute started ripping, and so they came up with a test called a Mullen Burst Test, and it's to test not only parachutes now, but also test filter media. Uh, so those kind of machines that we would have an operator operating, which is, uh, taking a piece of filter media, putting it inside of a, a machine, which is about the size of this, uh, this podium here, and they would, uh, test it to make sure that the burst strength is proper and the airflow is proper. Um, so that's what has to do with the, uh, the R and D and the research and development. Uh, so, it's part of it.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Frisby. Thank you, Chair.
Any other questions for the applicant by the commissioners?
Chair, I have a question.
Yes, Mr. Krautoff.
Would you say are, uh, that your, the rear of your building or the north side of it is up to codes with the trailer parked in the back? You've got a truck back there with a flat. You've got a trailer, you've got another trailer back there and some wooden pallets, and, uh, there's some other, uh, trash strung along the backside of it. Would you say that's up to code?
Well, the, the, uh, the, the trailers are, the trailers are licensed, so the trailers are there, as far, as far as I know, that, uh, that are licensed. Uh, you are correct about the, the, the truck with the, uh, with the flat tire. Um, I believe that when I drove by there before I came up here, I didn't see anything far as trash or anything strung anywhere, at least today, but you have to remember, the adjacent buildings behind us, we do also occupy that amount of space, and at times they put trash and stuff out that may not be ours. Um, uh, but I'm not aware of any trash that's strung, uh...
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant by the commissioners?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Is anybody in the audience like to speak in favor of this project? Anybody in the audience like to speak in opposition to this project? Any further discussion by the commissioners? Okay. Here, now I'm going to close by the hearing, and here, motion for the rezoning. Yes, Commissioner Billups.
I would move for approval of the rezoning, RZ zero-three-two-two-eight-two-zero-three.
All right, I have motion from Commissioner Billups. Do I have a second?
Second.
I get a second from Commissioner Graham, and this will be a roll call vote.
Commissioner Rohr.
Aye.
Commissioner Billups.
Aye.
Commissioner Stokenberry.
Aye.
Commissioner Graham.
Aye.
Commissioner Honeycock.
Aye.
Commissioner Krautoff.
Aye.
Commissioner Peel.
Aye.
Commissioner Veal.
Aye.
Chairperson Sanderson.
Aye. So, that motion carried, and the item we recommended and heard by the City Council at their Monday, may be second meeting at six P.M. All right. Uh, next item on the agenda are item five and six, PD FS zero-three-two-two-eight-two-one-five and PF zero-three-two-two-eight-two-one-four for Redwood Blue Springs, and ask for staff's presentation. Mr. Mallon.
Yes, uh, thank you, Chair. Um, one second here. Tonight's, uh, companion cases are the PD final plan and site plan design review, as well as the final plat for Redwood Blue Springs. Um, the, uh, applicant is proposing to develop a one-hundred-and-twenty-four-unit apartment complex on twenty-six point six acres, uh, approximately twenty-six point oh-five acres after right-of-way dedication. Uh, the site plan, bear with me here for a second. Property is located, uh, to the west of Seven Highway and on the north side of Wyatt Road. Uh, the property was, uh, approved, a preliminary, uh, preliminary plat was approved by Planning Commission, uh, in January of this year, uh, for all of the Redwood property, which included the twenty-six acres here and the, uh, eleven acres here, which is, uh, going to be saved for some commercial property in the future that's directly adjacent to Seven Highway. Uh, I would like to point out an error in the staff report, um, the, under the project description, it said that a final plat is also being applied for, uh, for thirty-seven point six-two acres. Uh, the final plat, as you will see, uh, in this drawing here, just covers, uh, the portion of the property, uh, to create one lot for the development of the apartment complex. The preliminary plat, which was approved by Planning Commission, uh, was for the full thirty-seven acres, and, uh, this final plat is just for the part being developed as the apartment complex. Uh, it leaves the portion adjacent to Seven Highway unplatted. Uh, it will have a preliminary plat that covers it, so if and when, or when that property is proposed for development, it will need to go, uh, back before, uh, the Planning Commission and City Council to create a final plat for that property. So, uh, there is an error in the staff report, uh, where it says it is a final plat for a one-lot subdivision on thirty-seven point six-two acres. It is for a one-lot subdivision on twenty-six acres. I apologize for that. Um, the, uh, site plan, or the final site plan includes, um, the, the layout of the buildings, uh, for the apartment complex, the access to all the adjacent roads, uh, architecture, uh, landscaping and site lighting. The, uh, final plan is in, uh, substantial compliance with the approved concept plan and the rezoning. Uh, that concept plan was approved by City Council in February of this year, uh, and this, uh, proposed final plan matches that. Um, the site includes one-hundred-and-twenty-four apartment units, as I mentioned, uh, distributed in twenty-two single-story, uh, apartment buildings, which include between four and eight attached units, and each unit has a two-car front-loaded garage. Um, access to the property, uh, just to reorient ourselves, even though this is just the final plan, uh, the concept plan, these access points were approved during the concept plan review. Access point onto Major Road and onto Wyatt Road. A future access, uh, on the west side will also be onto Major Road, uh, when Major Road is fully extended or, or developed to the west. At this time, only this, uh, initial access road, uh, will be built, and Major Road will only be built to serve this, uh, one access. Uh, the full access onto Wyatt Road will remain. Um, the site is going to be developed all as one phase, uh, as most apartment complexes are, um, it, and consists of, uh, the apartment complex building type, which, uh, in our code means, uh, multiple apartment buildings on one lot, uh, which is very common for apartment developments, to have it all be under one lot with the buildings, and then that, the, the, the apartment owner, uh, maintains ownership of the, the fee simple land underneath, uh, and the upkeep and maintenance thereof. Uh, the property includes internal access drives. Uh, all of these streets are private. Um, per the final plat, a private access drive easement will be granted across all of those access drives throughout the property. Um, the site preserves a significant amount of natural open space, uh, in the center and along the west side of the property, as well as providing, uh, buffers, uh, along the major road street frontage, uh, along the future, uh, commercial, uh, border, and along the Wyatt Road frontage as well. Uh, an eight-foot trail will be built, uh, for the portion of Major Road that's being developed at this time, and, uh, a five-foot sidewalk will be built along Wyatt Road. Uh, internal sidewalks, uh, will be built as well per the private street plan, which is here. Uh, this is a typical cross-section of the private street, uh, which includes two, uh, eleven-foot travel lanes and a six-foot sidewalk attached, uh, to the private, uh, drive. Um, this, uh, pavement section was one of the, the requests that is typically different than what city code, and that was approved by City Council. Um, bring up the landscape plan here. The proposed landscape plan meets all of the city code requirements, um, for, uh, not only the open space, but the amount of landscaping units provided, uh, along Major Road here. There will be, uh, the eight-foot trail, which will wind, uh, kind of in a meandering fashion along Major Road with a, uh, landscape berm, uh, adjacent to Major Road, uh, as was presented at the City Council to help create, uh, kind of a linear park effect as you drive down Major Road towards the west, uh, which will eventually connect to the future, uh, city park that will be built, uh, to the west of Twelfth Street, uh, just west of this property. Um, the, like I said, the heat, or the city, the landscape units, uh, exceed that, uh, required. All of the buffer requirements are met for adjacent properties and roadways. Uh, internal landscaping for each unit will be provided, as shown in this, in the, um, drawings, uh, provided as part of this landscape plan, uh, which helped to break up the appearance of the driveways, uh, for each of the individual units. Uh, in far as the open space, uh, due to the apartment complex building type, a minimum of forty percent open space is required, which is about ten point four acres, and approximately fifteen acres is being provided, or fifty-eight percent of the site is open space. Uh, active open space must be, um, fifteen percent per zoning, or three point nine acres, and they are proposing five point three eight acres, uh, which is approximately twelve percent, or twenty percent of the site. Um, per the open space requirements, the large portion here in the center and on the west side is being kept as a preserve, uh, which is, uh, and, uh, associated walking trails throughout that area, uh, and that is allowed to count as, uh, active open space under the code, so that the, the development is providing more than the required total open space area and, oh, active open space area. The architecture for the building, uh, also matches that of the proposed, or of the approved concept plan. Um, this is a, a typical building elevation, um, for, as I mentioned earlier, the buildings range between four and eight, uh, attached units. Um, employ front-loaded garages, uh, two-car garages with, uh, two spaces in the driveway for each unit. Uh, some of these, uh, buildings, uh, the twenty-two different building types, some have dormers to help break up the, the roof plane. All of them utilize, uh, shingles, um, siding, uh, and masonry, uh, on the, on the building elevations, uh, and in working with the applicant, uh, they have provided, uh, a full Wayne Scott, uh, of masonry along all of the front of, elevations for all of the buildings. Uh, the back elevations of the buildings are broken up, uh, through either recessed patios that are screened in, uh, or fencing, or patio doors and windows to help break up a monotonous appearance on, uh, on the rear of the buildings, and on the side elevations, um, where those face a street, uh, those will have a, a, a masonry wrap as well, um, and, uh, many of the side elevations also feature a side entrance to, to the building to help, uh, make those, uh, side elevations attractive as well. Um, as you can see, uh, a lot of the buildings are, uh, the, those were for the, the buildings that may face the street. Some of the internal buildings, where the buildings are right up against each other, uh, those will all be separated by a minimum of twenty feet, which meets the, our code requirements. Uh, those may not have as much architectural detailing because they won't be as visible from the private streets internally or the public streets around the perimeter of the property. Uh, here's an example of the back elevation being broken up by a, a, uh, sliding, uh, patio door or a screened-in patio area. That should cover all of the architecture. Um, there is a mailbox kiosk, uh, planned to utilize, uh, common mailbox area, which is architecturally integrated with the development, uh, and built out of materials to match the units to help it, uh, blend in better. Um, there were modifications to these, the plans approved as part of the PD zoning, which include, uh, an increase of the garage facade coverage from twenty-five to seventy-four percent. Uh, these proposed elevations meet that modification, uh, and the other was, uh, to eliminate the six-foot walkway adjacent to, uh, or on one side of the internal access drive. Uh, as I previously mentioned, the, the, the typical cross-section for the streets, the private streets throughout the development, uh, was approved by the, uh, City Council, uh, as part of the concept plan, and this final plan matches that. Uh, the preliminary plat, I'll go back up to that real quick, does include the one lot for twenty-six acres. Uh, it includes all of the necessary easements, uh, being dedicated, uh, to the city for utilities, uh, over and across the lot for access, um, waterline access, or waterline easements, sewer line easements, all the necessary easements that the city, uh, requires are being, uh, granted, uh, as part of that plat. Um, and it is in, uh, substantial compliance with the preliminary plat. Uh, staff recommends approval of the PD final plan, site plan, um, with three conditions, uh, one of which, uh, mirrors the PD modifications, and others states that all signage shown is for illustrative purposes and landscaping purposes only. Uh, final signage shall be approved, uh, by separate, or separate sign code, or separate permit reviewed through the sign code, and that, uh, building and final site design must meet the residential design standards. So, the plans show it, it's just we need to make sure that when the building permits come in, that they match these final plans. So, just wanted to put that condition in there. Uh, the final plat, um, staff recommends approval of the final plat with seven conditions, uh, finding that, uh, the, the final plat is in substant, substantial compliance with the preliminary plat, uh, and meets the code criteria for a final plat. So, uh, with that, I will be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you. Any questions for staff by the commissioners?
Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Peel.
Mr. Mallon, um, the turn arc on these private drives, are they enough to accept a pumper or, or ladder?
Uh, fire, for fire truck access?
Yes.
Uh, I don't know. Uh, maybe the applicant can ask that. Uh, this is in, um, the Southern Jackson County Fire Protection District, uh, and so, based upon the building height, uh, I don't believe that they need to necessarily provide that access, but, uh, the access width, um, based upon the street profile, is wide enough to accommodate, uh, a fire truck.
Yeah, I was more interested in the turn arc. Then, it's a twenty-two-foot private drive, so that's the only concern I had, so, would the city be able to answer that?
Yeah, I do know that the applicant is here, and the applicant's engineer is here as well, so that I'm sure they'll be able to answer that question.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff by the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Billups.
Not that this is going to necessarily have any bearing, but I'm just curious, uh, because of this being, um, one phase and all developed at one time, um, will the applicant be able to occupy some of these buildings while the other ones are still under construction?
I would leave that for them as well to answer what they're, what they're proposing.
Will they be able to start leasing before they've built every single one of these buildings?
Uh, typically speaking, in an apartment complex, yes, uh, that is allowed. Uh, it is allowed under city code. Uh, the, the certificates of occupancy is, is per building, and so, once one building is finished, they may start on either Major Road or Wyatt Road. I'm sure they could speak to what their, uh, proposed progression is, but as buildings are finished, the, those can get certificates of occupancy if all of the other infrastructure, uh, is, uh, installed, you know, the, all of the access drives, the sidewalks, things of that nature. But yes, the, that typically does happen.
Thank you.
Any other questions for staff by the commissioners? Yes, Commissioner Krautoff.
Chair, I have a, a question for the engineers about the, uh, infrastructure with, uh, building the, the rows and the streets that are coming in. Uh, I'd like to know if, if, if you could answer, uh, uh, the manhole covers, are they going into the middle of the street for the, for the sewer, or will they be closer to the curb? You know, building your new developments, uh, what is, what's the standard procedure for, for that?
As you know, Commissioner, generally the, uh, manholes are in the right-of-way to the, to the one side or the other of the street. On this, I'm not sure. I'm sure their engineer can tell you the exact layout. This being more of a, an apartment complex, a private development within, we don't necessarily look at that, at that detail.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for staff by the commissioners? See, now, would the applicant like to come forward? Could you please state your name and address, please? Uh, no, no need to swear in, just, uh, not a public hearing, so you just need a name and address, please.
Uh, Richard Batt, seven zero zero seven East Pleasant Valley Road, Independence, Ohio, four-four-one-three-one. I'll take 'em as I remember 'em, so, uh, there are no manhole covers of the street. They are all off of, off of the street, uh, in the yards, so you won't see manhole covers in the street. The... in the street to answer that question.
Thank you.
Second one, related to the, to build process. So, what, what, what happens is, we would come in and we would put the infrastructure in first. And so, we'd put the, the drive aisles, the water, the sewer, the storm system, we'd put all that in, in first. Then we would start building buildings, and we, we basically build almost in a manufacturer's assembly line. So, one building, we're going to come in and we're going to dig a foundation, and we're going to put the plumbing underneath, and, and we're going to do another one and another one, and the crew just works their way down the street. Same, and behind them comes a framer and a roofer, and, you know, the units are done on that basis. Typically, we will move people in building number one when we get a certificate of occupancy. And we will move people in building number two when we get a certificate of occupancy. There, there is an art to this about not having people living in a construction site, and so, we, we will typically build from one side and, you know, kind of work our way through the site and enter on the other side as we build. The other thing I did want to point out, the improvements on South Major and the walking path have to be installed before we can get our first, first certificate of occupancy. I mean, that is included, is a condition in, in the staff report. So, that's the way we typically work. We have, I, you know, I'd spoke to you guys before and told you who we are and what we do, but we have over a hundred of these neighborhoods, and it, it's just, it's the same way every time. We're almost like running on a manufacturer's assembly line. So, there was a question over here, I forgot already.
Regarding the turning radius?
Dealt with the turn arc on the private roads, will they accept a pumper as well as a ladder truck?
So, we, we have take, actually taken our plan to, to the Jackson County Fire Department, and they have reviewed their, our plan, and they are okay with it. One expansion to the, to that comment, we have a twenty-two-foot drive aisle, but adjacent to that is a six-foot, six-foot integral sidewalk, so there's twenty-eight feet there. The entire twenty-eight feet is constructed to accommodate the fire truck, and, and, you know, it's not typical like you see in a sidewalk where you have, or a driveway where you have a street built to one standard, and then all of a sudden you have a sidewalk built to another standard, which, you know, this city probably has repaired enough sidewalks. The sidewalk is actually built to road standards, so they really have a twenty-eight-foot swatch there to work with. We do not allow parking on the street, and we do internally police that. So, but we did, again, take our plan to the fire department, and they were okay with it.
All right, thank you, Mr. Bat.
Any other questions for the applicant by the commissioners? Seeing none, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, any other discussion by the commissioners? All right, seeing none, then I would ask for a motion on the Plan Development Final Plan Site Plan Design Review.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Kradoff.
I move for approval for Plan Development Final Plan Site Plan Design Review, PDF S-0322-8215 with three conditions, and final plat PF-03-22-8214 with seven conditions.
So, we'll, we'll do separate votes on that, so we'll do the Plan Final, Plan Development Final Plan Site Plan Design Review first with three conditions. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All right, second from Commissioner Beal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. All right, and then, Commissioner Kradoff, if you would mind, I'll ask for a motion on the final plat.
Okay. I move for approval for final plat PF-03-22-8214 with seven conditions.
All right, thank you. Have a motion from Commissioner Kradoff. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Second from Commissioner Beal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay. So, that item will be recommended and heard by the city council on Monday, May second meeting at six P.M. All right, item seven is other business. We do have a planning commission meeting scheduled for Monday, May ninth. And, Mr. Mallon, other business?
Yes, thank you. We will have a meeting on May ninth. That will be the first meeting after we discuss our new rules of procedure, so we will get to implement the new rules of procedure that we discuss here this evening, that were adopted by city council on April eighteenth, and also that will be the first meet, or the meeting in which we, the Planning Commission elects a new chair and vice chair. So, I will go through, so the, the UDC text amendments that were brought before the Planning Commission regarding the boards and commissions, including the Planning Commission, were approved by city council on April eighteenth. They went, they were, there was a public hearing before city council on April fourth, and then finally approved, and the ordinance approved on April eighteenth. One of those changes did reduce the number of Planning Commissioners from eleven members down to nine, so the nine members that we have now will be the number going forward. Some of the other changes in the, the UDC text amendment included the removal of Planning Commission members, in essence, by the mayor with approval of city council, which follows all the other boards and commissions, the election of the chair and the secretary. The secretary is a term that is used by the Missouri state statutes. We will use that to basically mean the, the secretary's role would be served as the vice chair of the Planning Commission. And the rules and procedures, we will go over here in a moment, and the final planning, or UDC amendment is that Planning Commission shall submit a report on April first of each, on or before April first of each year, written report to the city council containing activities and updates to the board. That is the similar annual report that staff presents to you every year. This just puts a timeline to that of on or before April first. The rules of procedure, there's some ones that I will highlight here. I, I ask that if you hadn't had, have not had a chance to read these in detail, that you do so, and let me, or Jackie, or Alia know if you have any questions, but I will hit some of the highlights. On page number two, again, under membership, the Planning Commission shall consist of nine members. Under conduct of members of the Planning Commission, under number one, the Planning Commissioners shall take time to prepare themselves for hearings and meetings. Number two is a, is a new change, is that any member of the commission absent for twenty percent of the regular meetings in a year, absent extenuating circumstances, may be removed from the commission for cause by the mayor with approval of city council as it was defined in the code. So, that is twenty percent. Each member of the commission who shall not be able to attend a scheduled meeting shall notify the community development director at the earliest possible opportunity. So, that is a pretty substantial change. All of the other stuff that is different from the original rules and procedures that were adopted back in ninety-five, which all of you should have been provided a copy of that, are generally the same in terms of the orientation with new members, meeting with city staff, and reading Planning Commissioner's workbook, and attending trainings as appropriate. The appointment of a member as a non-voting liaison from the commission to other boards will be made in April, which just happened, and some of those both still, still need to be done. The staff responsibilities stay the same for the recording secretary, the community development director, and the city attorney. Meeting schedules stay the same. Special meetings stay the same, workshops, quorum. Just want to go over that real quick, is that a majority of the entire commission, excluding vacancies, shall constitute a quorum. So, whoever is present that evening, if, if we only have nine members, then, then that nine member, or seven members out of the nine, then that seven members constitutes the quorum, and any recommendation of approval or approval would then be based upon the majority of that number of those that are in attendance that evening, not of the nine total members. So, if there's seven present, normally if you have nine present, you need five to have a, a motion pass. If there are seven present, you would need to have four, so that's, in essence, what that is saying. Voting, all members, including the chair, shall have a vote and shall vote when present. Any member may automatically disqualify themselves from voting on any decision in which there might be a conflict of interest, as defined by the city charter, city ordinances, or state statutes. There's a conflict section later on that I will go over in a second. Rules of parliamentary procedure, we will generally follow Robert Switford's order. Conflicts, so, in previous meetings, and it, and it happened at one of our Planning Commission meetings, where we had somebody abstain from voting, or need to abstain from voting because of a conflict of interest, and how that affected the vote was a little undefined, and so, one of the rules of procedure that has been adopted for not only this commission, but also city council, and as well as all the boards and commissions, addresses that. If a member of the commission believes that they have a conflict and would be unable to vote on an agenda item, the member should consult with the city attorney to confirm the conflict. Once the conflict is confirmed, the city attorney would assist in the preparation of a statement to be used by the member to recuse themselves prior to any discussion, public hearing, introduction, and vote on the conflicting matter. The member would leave the council chambers prior to the initiation of the matter on the agenda, and would remain absent until the final vote of the matter. The recusal may affect the quorum required for the meeting and majority affirmative vote. So, if, if we had nine members and somebody had to recuse themselves, we would, for that item, we would be an eight-person Planning Commission. So, the quorum and majority rules would apply as such. The commission or commission members do not have an option to abstain from a vote. So, there is only the recusing yourself because of a conflict. There is no ability to just simply not vote. And the, the need to recuse yourself prior to the agenda item being discussed. If a commission member does not believe they have enough information to make a decision on a matter, they may move to continue the matter to a future meeting, requesting staff to provide the needed information. So, one of the instances in which, in which people have abstained from voting in the past is citing the need for more information. Somebody may say that they don't have enough information on the matter, so they, they choose to abstain from voting. Under these newer rules of procedure, that is not going to be allowed. A vote must be provided, but if a member of the Planning Commission feels they do not have enough information from either the applicant or city staff, they may request a continuance of the public hearing, so that staff or the applicant can provide additional information. The same most, or same order of the meetings will generally be followed. Call to order, confirmation of a quorum, approval of previous meeting minutes, presentations of cases in the order from basically zoning amendments down to site plans, as we've done in the past, and as you're aware, sometimes we will move up corresponding cases if there's like a final plat associated with a rezoning. We may move those up to be heard at the same time, or if the chair suggested and approved by, by the council at the beginning, we may move a, a lower priority item, or a lower, let me, priority's not the right word, an item of less public interest to the front of the meeting, so that we don't have a, a roomful of people waiting to speak on an item that's at the bottom of the agenda. We may move some things up or down, depending on the amount of public participation we expect on any given item, and to respect all of our, our citizens' times, businesses' times, and, and of course, Planning Commissioner's time. The order of the public hearing is going to be a little different, including the swearing-in procedures. From now on, there will be a swearing-in of all people who choose to speak on that public hearing at one time, at the beginning of, when that public hearing is opened. That would include city staff, the applicant, any attorneys representing the applicant, or any public who have either signed up to speak, or who think that they might want to testify. So, at the beginning of the public hearing, we'll do a big group swearing-in, where the court reporter will, you know, have everybody who believes they may speak stand up, raise their right hand, they'll read, or she'll read the, the oath, or whatever it is, to us, and we'll all say, "I do." So, yes.
So, with that rule in place, does that mean that someone couldn't decide halfway through the public hearing that they wanted to speak and they weren't sworn in?
No, it does not prevent that. What would happen in, in that instance, well, taking forward what, what, with the group swearing-in is when, so if I get sworn in as city staff, at the beginning, when I come up to approach the microphone, I will simply say my name, my address, and then I have been sworn. So, anybody who did stand up and was sworn in will say, "Hi, I'm, I'm Joe Smith, I live at this address, and I was, and I have been sworn." If there is somebody else in the audience that wishes to speak and was not sworn in, they can do it under the previous procedure of coming up and saying, "I have not been sworn," and then they would go through the swearing-in process, as we have been doing with, with individuals.
Thank you.
Yep. So, we would swear everybody in, the staff will provide the staff report, the applicant and their representatives will make comments regarding the request. Those in support of will be asked to state their name and address, confirm their swearing, they've been sworn in. Then it'll be those in opposition to. Then the presiding officer or the chair will announce that the public comment section of the hearing is over. So, whereas in previous times, we will allow public comment to kind of happen at any time while the public hearing is open, we're going to try to confine that to staff presentation, applicant presentation, those in favor, those against. Maybe if the applicant needs to get back up and address something else, or if staff needs to answer any more further comment or questions, and then the chair will say, "Okay, public comment period is now over as part of this public hearing, but will not close the public hearing." Any discussion amongst the commission needs to happen on the record as part of the public hearing, and the, the chair will ask for that, but it'll all be done during the public hearing. So, what we've had in times in the past where the public hearing gets closed, and then there's discussion, or during the voting process, somebody will say, "I'm voting in favor, and here's why." All of that stuff needs to be done during the public hearing, so it is on the official public record. So, once that public hearing is closed, the only speaking or reactions, or anything from the members of the Planning Commission, is, is the vote and the vote itself, either to a, a yes or a no vote at that point. All public, all speakers are going to be required to fill out a speaker appearance form prior to the start of the meeting. This is going to be a little clunky to start, because as Commissioner Phillips just pointed out, there are oftentimes when people are sitting out here in the audience, and they don't realize that they're going to want to speak. And so, we will have plenty of speaker appearance forms here, so that if somebody decides in the middle of the meeting they want to speak, the chair can still call them then to come up and speak, whether in favor or in opposition to, and then staff will get them to fill out one of the public, the speaker appearance forms after they speak. The goal of this is to try to get their name and address spelled correctly, and, and to have a better, more formal record of it, than trying to guess what somebody's spelling of their last name or address is, as we do currently. So, that one's going to take a little bit of getting used to, but we will, staff will be prepared to handle those situations. Those are the major changes in the rules of procedure. Again, the, the, the attendance, the making of the, the order of the public hearing, the, the group swearing-in, the having all the comments as part of the public hearing, the public comment portion of the public hearing, and then also the recusing of oneself if there is a conflict. So, anybody who believes that they have a conflict should reach out to Jackie or, or me, if they can't get ahold of Jackie, and then I'll get ahold of Jackie, to discuss that whether or not you may have a conflict of interest, financial or personal, with, with the application that's coming before you. And then, if there is a conflict, that commissioner who does needs to get up and actually leave the room, so that they are fully not a part of that entire process. Those are the, the major changes. I'm happy to answer any questions. Yes?
Question.
Commissioner Kradoff?
Is there a new rule for the Planning Commission? Say, for instance, if we...
Say, for instance, if we were part of a hearing and we want to come before the council and speak to that issue later, are we not allowed to do that now if we voted on it? It seems like I read something.
There, that is, that is a good point. That is a change that is in the rules of procedure, is that if a planning commissioner wants to address city council on a matter, then they should recuse themselves. I believe, wasn't that it, Jackie? Yeah, that, so if you believe or have a conflict of interest, and you know that you're going to want to talk to city council about a proposed rezoning, then you should recuse yourself from the planning commission action on that. And then, you're allowed to be a private citizen and address city council. But if you participate in the public hearing and vote on the matter, then yes, you are precluded from addressing city council on that matter.
During the hearing, do you have to recuse, remove yourself from the hearing, or how does that work?
It should be done prior to the meeting, prior to any discussion on that item, that agenda item during the meeting. And then, once that agenda item is over, you can return back to the meeting. But it's to remove the, not only the conflict of interest, but the appearance of a conflict of interest, which in the public's eye can be just as important as a conflict of interest. And to remove any possibility to protect the council, or to protect the commission, the city council, staff, the applicant, from any kind of accusations of having an influence over the decision on which somebody may have a conflict. So, in a worst-case scenario, somebody could have a conflict, and they don't leave the meeting, and they sit down in the front row and give everybody stink eye who's voting on it. So, we want to completely remove that possibility and just have the person who has a conflict step out of the room, wait until the matter is over. They don't have a vote, they're just not participating in it. And then, staff will come out and get them after that matter is over. That way, we're protecting everybody's best interests. Yes, Commissioner Phillips.
I know we've discussed this several times in the past, but I think this might be a good time to bring it up again. In these rules, we've got a set meeting time again at 6:30. And I know in the past, there's been some discussion about moving us back in line with the council and moving the meeting up to six o'clock. Could we discuss amending that right now, and if anybody is in favor of it? And before we, I assume we have to vote on this and approve it?
No, this has already been voted on and approved by City Council.
Okay. But we could still amend it, or we could make that change?
I think there's the potential to do that. I don't know. Jackie, what is your thought on that?
Since it's in the code?
Well, the meeting time is not in the code.
It is, actually.
It is in the...
Bottom of page three.
The rules and procedures are the actual development code.
Bottom of page three.
I don't see it in the code. I see it in the rules of procedure. Page three, meeting, yeah, this is the rules of procedure, so this is not in the code. So, this would just take an amendment by City Council at a time. We wouldn't actually have to amend the Unified Development Code. So, I think if the planning commission wanted to make that recommendation, then that's something that staff could bring forward and propose that the city council change, certainly. I don't know if they would do it, but I think it's certainly...
Since they did it for themselves, they'd let us do it, too.
You know, I have not been around to long enough to know why 6:30 was the determined time.
Six thirty was originally the time for both council and commission.
Okay.
And a few years back, the commission, or the council, on direction of the mayor, I believe, moved up to six. And then, because, again, I've been around for a long time, so... But I would not have any objection to moving up to six o'clock. I know previously with some of the former members, there were some conflicts. I'm not sure if that still exists or not. Just be something I thought we might discuss at this time.
Yeah, I think it's certainly open for discussion. And then, if a recommendation were to be made, then we can address that with City Council and see if they'd be willing to amend the adoption of these rules and procedures based upon the feedback of the planning commission members. So.
And we'll, I guess, open it up for any other comments on the 6:00 P.M.
I would be in favor of the six o'clock.
As would I.
What happens if it doesn't work for everyone?
I think it would need to work for everyone.
Yeah, that's always been the case, is that if somebody had a conflict, then we just, we tabled it for, you know, we didn't adopt it.
I see.
Do you have a conflict?
Well, my work schedule wouldn't, would allow it for now, right now, so it would be a conflict.
Same with mine, it's rather difficult to get out of work in time to get here by 6:30 alone, but...
I'll say, I mean, for me, the time is fine, six four, six thirty. I don't know if there's any concerns with applicants. I mean, I guess they come to the city council meeting, but is there any issues with applicants and the time as it is today, that earlier would be harder, or, I don't know? Just another facet of that, that they need to make it to.
If they can make it to city council by six, they can make it to planning by six.
Yep, that's true.
So, I'm fine if there are commissioners who have a conflict, and we don't want to look at it right now. But that's fine. I just thought I'd bring it up because I didn't know.
Any other comments, thoughts on that? I guess since it doesn't work for everyone, we'll maybe table that for another later time.
Look at it another year.
Yeah. Any, is there any other questions about what Mr. Mallon presented? Any other business?
Yeah, if anybody does have any other questions after you read through it a little bit more after tonight, or before our next meeting, or have any questions as you read through it about how this will work at our next meeting, please reach out, and we'll discuss it further.
Thank you.
Commissioners, have any other business? Then I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Motion from Commissioner Honeycutt. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Veal. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's meet in adjourn. Good night.